Placko can pull the roll?
Lori Kielinski.
Here.
Olivia Graci.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here. Stand for the flag, please.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section of the agenda. Before we get started, I would like to make a resolution to amend the agenda and replace the language for executive session item fifteen A. I can read through it now. We are going to read through it if it's approved at the end, but I did give the board a copy. Is there any...
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Do we're going to read through it?
I can, if you guys would like me to.
Sure.
Be resolved that the Riverside Board... I'm sorry, Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby adjourns to executive session at XPM to discuss a personal matter relating to employment of a public official and compensation. And Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby designates all matters discussed in this executive session as strictly confidential and finds that this designation is warranted because of the status of this matter and the need to preserve confidentiality to properly conduct the business of the Board of Education.
Okay, and that is replacing present language that we have?
Correct.
And that present language exists where?
Fifteen A, in the agenda.
Okay, and so this is for the public to know then who will be present in that executive session?
Who will be present? We've got to clear that in the meeting, who's present. It's the board during the executive session.
Will it be just the board?
It'll be administration.
Okay, so just so the public knows, only the board is held to the confidentiality. Anyone else who's present is not held by law to that confidentiality.
Any other discussion? Mr. Placko, can you pull the roll?
Lori Kielinski.
Aye.
Olivia Graci.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Can I have a second?
Second. Mr. Fishel.
Mr. Heck.
I was there first.
You got it.
Any discussion? Mr. Placko, can you pull the roll?
Lori Kielinski.
Aye.
Olivia Graci.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to special reports.
We have a special report.
All right, and discussion of the business. I believe we had one item, Mr. Heck.
Indeed. Mr. Fishel, pass one to Mr. Placko.
Yes.
And there should be enough for the board and Dr. Keles and actually Dr. Malacher as well. So during the, I think it was the main meeting, we had a discussion about what's... it's... what's the word? I just had in my head some of the classroom, the responsive classroom.
Thank you.
And we had a lively discussion, and during that conversation, it was brought up that that the SEL is a standard for Ohio. It's an educational standard for Ohio. And I'd made the comment during that conversation that that actual standard is optional. And so what I have given out to the rest of the board is the cover letter from the then state superintendent, Paulo Dameria, and I've highlighted a section of that. So it's... so what it is, just so people might be able to see, it is the... in essence, the cover letter for that section of the standards, and it's addressed to... from the superintendent to dear Ohio parents, families, caregivers, educators, and community partners. The paragraph that I'm about to read substantiates what I said, that it's optional, and I will read it. "The State Board of Education formally adopts the standards in June twenty nineteen while schools and districts consider their own local implementation." That's right. Each district and school will decide for itself the extent to which it uses the standards and how it will use these standards. A school district's... schools or district's choice will be informed by the values and needs of its local community. These standards are meant to be integrated into the regular daily activities in school, and they do not mean more classes for students or more work for teachers. So I didn't want that... my statement during that meeting just to hang out there lingering that, you know, that you know, I wanted to substantiate what I said. So with this, that's the only thing I wanted to say, but I did want to, in essence, bring it into the record that indeed that SEL standards are optional. Any... there's no motion or anything. Any questions or discussion?
No, I just want to... I would like to read just a sentence that's in here, just so that people can understand what it was that they were trying to accomplish at that time. It says, "Carefully crafted over a ten-month period by Ohio educators, counselors, and socially-emotional learning experts. The standards seek to develop the whole child by helping students build self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, and relationship and responsible decision-making skills." So I think that's what the intention of the whole.
Right, but obviously, it's controversial, and those are nice words, but I think there's more to it as we discussed earlier, and I did want to substantiate the fact that these standards are indeed optional. So anyway, that's all I have.
I guess I think when I read this, to me, it doesn't necessarily read that it's fully optional, and the sentence says, "Each district and school decides for itself the extent to which to use these standards." With the standard, there's still an expectation if they formally adopted the standards, they're just saying the school district's choice will be informed by the values and needs of its community. So maybe every community does it differently, but the way I read it is that they did formally adopt the standard in twenty nineteen, but each district should choose for itself how to use the standard.
Right, or how not to use the standard.
Well, I would suggest that extent could be zero to one hundred.
Right, that is exactly the point. So anyway, we're happy to rehash May if you'd like, but I did just want to substantiate my comment, and that I did not just pull that out of the air, that it actually is an optional standard.
Can I ask a question when we talk about standards then? Mr. Heck, if it's optional, then wouldn't we consider all the standards that they put out optional?
No, because this one is different to the statement. You have the ability to implement the standard to the extent that you'd like, from zero to a hundred, and the other standards are not phrased that way.
Even if that's the case, though, the paragraph before the highlighted one is coming from the same people that are saying to what extent the district implements this. And that whole paragraph is about the value of social-emotional learning, right?
Would you like to rehash what happened in May?
No, I'm just saying, this is what it says. It says, "The social and emotional learning standards are responsible to what already is happening in schools and districts across the state. Parents and teachers tell us, 'We need to focus more deliberately on developing these skills in students, and we need clear standards that define social-emotional learning. They recognize that child social-emotional learning is an important enabler to student's success during the child's formative years while they are in school and beyond. Students with social-emotional learning skills benefit from increased attention, learning memory, and academic success will put them on the road to a bright future.'" I'm just saying, you know, this is a whole letter here. We're looking at the one that's highlighted.
And I am just pointing out that it's optional. You can... we can have a discussion, if you'd like to go back to May, and have a full discussion on why there... the... where things are today is not where they're intended to go. I'm just making the point. Then it's optional.
I'm not here to argue.
And then let's not talk about it anymore.
I'm just pointing out the fact that it's coming from the same document.
It is, but the paragraph I have highlighted trumps what is said. We have the ability to... the extent to which we adopted from zero to a hundred percent. It is our choice as a board to pursue that. It is not required. That's all I'm saying. I was not expecting there to be so much feedback, but I did want to substantiate that what I said, I didn't pull it out of thin air, that it... there's actually... I'm backing it up with documentation.
I don't... I'm sorry, I just don't read it the same way. I really don't read it the same way.
So how would you... the extent that you'd like? So the extent is ten percent, two-hundred percent?
No, I'm reading the absolutely next... like, the next two sentences later, it says, "Schools and districts will have flexibility to choose whether and how to gauge the extent to which students are demonstrating mastery of the standards." It doesn't say that we can't, that we are allowed to not use them. It just says they're not going to develop tests or...
I had one statement.
Let me just read this sentence, and then certainly Mr. Fishel, you have the floor. The second line in the statement says, "That's right. Each district and school will decide for itself the extent..." the extent doesn't say, you know, fifty percent to a hundred. It says, "To the extent to which these standards are used and how..." which... sorry, let me start again. "That's right. Each district and school will decide for itself the extent to which it uses these standards and how it uses these standards." Extent does not provide any minimum requirement, and the minimum requirement, if there's no minimum requirement, the minimum... it is assumed that it's zero. Mr. Fishel?
Well, we're in a school setting, and the idea is education and the meaning of a word is important. And so what I would add is, it says, "Schools and districts will have flexibility..." flexibility is pretty clear. "To choose..." there's a choice in the word "whether," W-H-E-T-H-E-R. "Whether" means yes or no. Doesn't mean it's obligatory. It's whether. So words are important, and I would think here in a school district with educated people, we could understand the words that are written. "Whether" and "extent" are two very important words in this document.
I just don't see it that way. I believe if you read the rest of the sentence, that's taken out of context.
I read the whole paragraph. It is not taken out of context.
So I think we all interpret things differently. I think we can all read the same book right, and we might have different outcomes, or different things we've all learned, I'm sorry. So I guess my thing is...
We chose, as a board overall, to continue down the path, and that's clearly evident here that we can do that as a board, right? There is dissent. All I'm saying, and I'm really unhappy that I'm getting pushed back, is that we had the option not to. That's all I'm saying. It is not required. And "extent" and "whether" too, as Mr. Fishel said, is very clear, and why we are chopping this up, it really disturbs me frankly, because it is clear that we have the option. We chose not to, but I didn't... I, from a personal integrity standpoint, I wanted to bring this forward because I made that statement. Nobody pushed back on me, and I just wanted to make sure that that statement was substantiated, and I didn't pull it out of thin air. So I... you can pretend that extent doesn't mean... extent, you know, means the whole spectrum of zero to a hundred percent, and whether to, you know, whether or not that is a zero to a hundred percent, I would strongly disagree, and I think if... that from a legal standpoint, that it is clear. We can, we did, as a board overall, choose to do it, but boy, I'm really pretty surprised that there's so much feedback.
So can I get kind of close on that unless there's any additional discussion? Thank you for bringing the information in.
My pleasure.
All right. There was no other old business presented, and there was no new business presented. That brings us to our Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. The first one is Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison. We... there is no update from the Business Advisory Council. I'm sure we won't be getting an update once we kind of know who's going to step into those shoes and lead that effort, so I'll look forward for an update from Mr. Martino when he takes over and makes some decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Curriculum and Programming Committee Alumni Association Liaison. Mr. Fishel?
Yes, so we had a meeting June twenty-second, and I would say the focus is probably what we're going to go over tonight, which is the stack of papers here, which our curriculum director will be happy to explain some of the details. And we, as a board, are going to be looking at courses study and all of the information that goes into explaining that, so that when anyone in the district or outside of the district would like to look at what our curriculum is, they will be able to do so in a little bit easier manner than what it is today, and a little bit more thoroughly. So we'll be going over some of that, and there were a few other things in the meeting we went over. There's going to be a new teacher orientation on August third that was announced, and a few other items dealing with some money that would be spent here or there, and how it's spent, and with whom, and a couple other minor items. But this is the main topic of discussion, and that's the curriculum. As far as alumni, there was no meeting this month. The golf outing went very well, and we'll find out how much money the Alumni Association made on the golf outing, but that'll be next meeting, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Brings us to Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison, Mr. Heck.
Sure. So I think the big thing that came out of the meeting, the Buildings and Grounds, is that we are... have on our agenda tonight, a motion to purchase four modular units, or four classrooms anyway. I don't know if they're individual... how many? Two modules? Four modules? One module, four classrooms?
It's actually now one module, two classrooms. Because there was originally two modulators of four classrooms, one of them was sold, so we're just going to pull one modular and two classrooms.
Okay, so I have some questions.
It changes a little since the unit was sold, or the unit, so it's one modular that has two classrooms.
All right, so when I looked at the agenda today, it wasn't the price. We'll have discussion on that when we get to it. So separately, so just strictly on Buildings and Grounds, we heard the complaints that we had a space problem at Buckeye. We were trying to address it. Originally, I thought we were addressing it with four, but we're addressing it with two, so we will find out, you know, hopefully that will alleviate some of the problems. It will obviously, if we're too short, then there still may be some space issues, but we are... we understand the concern, the complaints, and so we're in the process of at least addressing part of the problem. And based on the conversation where we are at with figuring out how to move forward with the district buildings overall, this, although a stopgap measure, would certainly, hopefully alleviate some of the issues. So we'll have to have a more extensive conversation when we get to that part of the agenda where we approve that. So very happy to report that the kilns, which were a very long conversation and story for the new schools, are now installed and operating, and as soon as Dr. Keles retires, I think we're going to name them after Dr. Keles. Right, and Mr. Placko, are you going to talk at all about the... your meeting with Bieloski and what things stand?
Yes, I was going to give an update on that. My friend, I reported.
Terrific, and I will not pursue that. Trying to think. And you also will give an update on the rest of the units?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well then, much of what I could talk about is going to be covered by Mr. Placko, who probably has more current information than I have. I'm trying to see if there's anything else. I... those are the big things. We're doing our best to address the space concerns at Buckeye, and then there's some other things that are going on that are relatively minor, but important to Buildings and Grounds overall. Mrs. Grassi, do you have anything else that I missed?
Nope, that was it.
That's my report. Thank you.
So, Mr. Heck, obviously, Mr. Placko would have more information since we're down to one unit modular instead of two.
Right, that is...
Minor update.
Yes, so we'll have a further discussion when we get to that.
We've got a lot going on, right?
Just when you think you have it.
All right, that brings us to Policy Committee Booster Organization Liaison, Mr. Hart.
We have a policy meeting on May twenty-sixth. Went through everything. It is... the first read is on the agenda today. Buildings and Grounds in operation, letter G. So that'll be the first read of all the policy revisions, but there was nothing. That'll be for the bigger part, and Mr. Heck?
I don't have anything there. Thank you.
That's it then.
Thank you. Brings us to Superintendent Report.
Thank you. I'd like to submit our semi-annual bullying reports, and Mrs. Kielinski. These reports will be posted on our website in reports of Ohio Advice Code two-three-thirteen point six-six-six, and War Policy fifty-five seventeen point zero. We don't have the updated as well.
Thank you.
The remainder of my time will be spent on how to access the course of study along with Dr. Malacher. Like to start, kind of have discussion, I think, at our last board, maybe we said we were going to cover this this time out in June.
So Mallory's going to help me drive. And the first thing that I want to point out before we get started on the course of study is, while the board is going through this process and approving these more formal documents, I did receive an email earlier this week about somebody wanting to vet curriculum for their high school student, and I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that on our website, which is up on the board right there, if you go to District Departments... Mallory's going to click for me. Curriculum and Instruction. It breaks it down to the three levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. Mallory, you can just click on High School for me. So under the High School tab, this is the Riverside Canvas Curriculum. This curriculum log gets linked there, and then all of the syllabi and major curriculum decisions we have made are all listed here. So if your child is in English one, you can click on this and see what the syllabi is upcoming for that class, okay? Which includes what they do during the day, what they read, things like that. So all of the material that is getting put into these formal documents exists for public consumption currently on our website. If you would click on the Elementary tab... Mallory, would you do that for me? The Elementary tab is organized a little bit differently, so it has our reading and writing curriculum and links to the actual program. The Phonics program that we use, which is Foundations, with a link to that. The Handwriting program that we use, because yes, indeed, we still teach Course of Writing, that is here. The Math program, and then how we cover Science programming. So anything that anyone wants to know about curriculum that's going on in the district currently now, it has been and continues to be available on the website under the Curriculum and Instruction tab. So I wanted to get that out so that there wasn't any confusion about these documents not being public right now. These are more formal documents that we have decided, or you have decided, that this was the format we were going to use, and moving forward, you're going to approve all that, so... so that's that tab. Now Mallory's going to flip over to my email. So I sent you guys an email today, and I sent it to myself, okay? Because this is how you're going to access. Lori, Melinda, and Jen, I did not make you a hard copy, because I thought you said you were okay doing an electronic copy, okay? I did, Tom and Scott, make hard copies for you, but we have to talk about that, because we're going to run into some trouble down the road if you go all hard copy all the time. So I wanted to walk through this, because I think it's easier than you think to access this material for all of you electronically. So the first thing, link that's up there, it says, "VOE Math Course of Study." So I created a document for you that just currently has the math documents. If you look at the bottom of this sheet... can you see the bottom? I don't know if I can see it, Mallory, because of the screen. There's two tabs. There's a K-seven tab... oh, you can't see it, okay. Lori, it's highlighted. There, just a second. Sorry. Excuse me. There's a K-seven tab, and then there's the High School Math. Eighth grade, I lumped it into High School, because that's where they're located. Under each of these... in each of these tabs is each course of study as a live link. So if you were to click on any of those, it's going to take you directly to that Grade Levels Math Course of Study. So Mallory, right now, is clicking on... is showing you how they pop up, okay? So you can see, we have a little snafu with Honor Six Math. That's forthcoming. It's basically going to be the sixth-grade curriculum, a part of the seventh-grade curriculum. I didn't realize that one didn't get done, so it's coming, okay? So that's the only one we're missing. Mallory, if you click on the High School tab, you will see everything from eighth grade all the way to our AP courses, okay? Tom and Scott, you have a copy of every single one of these, from K through AP Math Courses at the High School. You have them all right there. Here's where I see the issue moving forward if you do a paper copy. You are not going to be able to click on any of the live links that exist in those documents. So that's going to be problematic. I am perfectly fine if you two, or one, if you want to come together, if you want to come yourself, if you want to come in and I can walk you through more detail how to access this, you're not going to run into a ton of problems with math, because there's not a whole lot. There's some videos and stuff that are linked in some of these documents, but when we start adding into Social Studies or English, and there are more articles and more videos and things like that, you're going to want to be able to click on those, and it's just not practical or realistic to think I can get all of that to you in a paper copy. So just... I just want you to chew on that a little bit and think about it going forward, how best we tackle that, okay? I just... I want to... because I don't want you to not be able to access what you want to look at, okay? So that's how you're going to see all the documents. Okay, go ahead.
So after you sent that this afternoon, I read through some of it, and I read where you said you won't be able to access everything by hitting the link. And so let's just say I have a hard copy, and I go to a link and I can't access it. I'd be able to access it online, right?
Correct, yes.
So I could... I could take my hard copy, figure out where I am online, go there and get that link and access it. It would be that simple.
I'll say yes. I don't think that's simple, but if you think that's simple, yes. That would be the process you follow. I don't think that's simple. I think it's simple to go into the document and click on it right there. But yes, you can do it that way.
It wouldn't be simple for me, but I'm looking at a parent that hopefully has a little bit more ability on the computer than I might have, and if they literally had a hard copy and they needed to hit... click on a link, and you can't do that with a hard copy, they could then access the website and hit that link, find out where they are, and hit that link and access it.
Exactly. I guess my point is, is if you can go on the website, get into the document, and click on the link, I'm hoping you're just looking at the document online. But either way, that... but yes. So you can access it either way, and like I said, I am perfectly happy. You guys can even come in here, I can set you up on the computer, and we can walk through, you know what I mean, doing a couple of them that way, till you get comfortable with it, before we get into the English and the Social Studies and some of the other ones that might have just some more external sources, okay? So Mallory, can you go back to the Elementary tab for me and click on Third Grade, please, and open that up? I just want to run through with you how the document is set up, so you'll know what you're looking at. The first column is the topic that is... I think that's as big as it's going to get, unfortunately. The first column is the topics they're covering. The second column are the objectives. The second column with the objectives are the state standards. And what I want you to see at the top of the document, and this is the other thing that you won't be able to access in a hard copy. I have linked all the standards directly into the document. So up at the top, there's the Grade Three ODE Math Standards. So if you want to know what OA one is, or OA two, you can click on that link, and it will take you directly to ODE, and you can look up what the standard is. So that is directly in the document for you to look at. So that is directly in the document for you to look at. Okay? So they're set up by the subject, which is third grade math, and this is module one. And then each one has a different number of modules. They're all a little bit different. There's the discussions that the students do, so they have, remember, we talked about inputs and outputs? What are teachers giving to kids? Those are the inputs for them to learn the material. And what are the students doing as outputs to show that they've mastered it? Okay? Couple of things that I wanted... So is everybody okay with, with this document and how it's set up?
When I was looking at that this afternoon, I was really curious what bunches and bunches of bunnies was.
It's a book? And so here's...
I, I know it was a book, I just thought it was, you know...
So here's something that I would say, as you're going through it, if, if there's something that you wanted to, so clearly, we can't link a book, do you know what I mean? But if there's something in there that strikes you as, hey, I think there should be a link, or I would like to dive into this a little bit more, you need to let me know. I probably would have to reach out to the teachers. I can't know every course of study and every detail that they do, do you know what I mean? But I certainly can reach out to the group of teachers or the team of teachers that wrote the course of study and get clarification if we, if you think that we need that. Okay? So it is, this is, this is a document in review, and it will always be under construction. So there's always going to be new material, new stories, new articles, no matter what the subject matter is. So it's always going to be a living document. I, I guess I want to make sure that everybody understands that. As we grow and change, and society grows and changes, there's going to always be something that we want to add. This is going to serve as the document where people can come and know what we are using as our foundational pieces, you know what I mean? And then as we change, or add, or delete things, these will be updated accordingly.
So that's kind of the, the gist behind doing it digitally, is because who would want to get another paper copy every time somebody makes a change to it? Because this is going to change.
It will. The standard should not change, you know what I mean? Because the, um, as far as the Department of Education goes, I have not heard about a revamping of standards, you know, coming down the pike or anything. I think that's going to stay fairly stable. So those things will not change.
Right. And normally, when there's a change like that, you would just copy the one page when there's the change, so it can be inserted into the body.
Yeah, if it was a hard copy.
If it's a hard copy, right.
Is it possible to add something to the section for documenting what changes? Because I just think about when we have to come back and approve again, right? So we're going to approve it the first time. If things change, at some point, we should put on the calendar that we should be relooking at it, and...
So the only time, so my understanding is that this would come back every however many years, four years, if that's what we want to go on an annual review, we probably, you're not going to want to do all of them every four years. So we're probably going to have to get on a different cycle. But if they changed a book, or they changed, changed an article, I wouldn't expect that that would be something that would come to the board for a change.
I, I agree, but I think it'd be nice if there's a section saying, hey, I take this off, replace it with it, just so when we're relooking at it, or whoever's relooking at it, they just understand what changed. Instead of trying to go through and say, oh, you know, compare two different notes. If it's not too much of record keeping, I just think adding something simple at the bottom...
Well, if we scroll down to the bottom, I do have the date, so I could always, every time it got updated, I could change, you know what I mean? My thought is, every time it got updated, that you would note that it was either reviewed or changed on that day.
Would we be able to save us a historical copy? With a date on it?
Well, Google always has. I mean, you could look at, you could look at right there and see all the changes.
But I guess my thing is, we'd have to sit down and compare every little line to figure out what changed. So I, I can give you an example of what we do at work. We may make a change to kind of a record. I can give you a quick, simple, and see if that could be added.
Yeah, that would be...
I just think it'd be easy if we want to see it then.
Absolutely.
I don't mean to make extra work, but just for record's sake.
I'm just trying to think back when we did hard copies.
How we did it?
So hard copies existed, we just didn't change it. I mean, if you changed a book or an article, you didn't change it. It just, it sat like that for four years. We didn't...
Until you relooked at it.
Yeah, until you did it, yeah. So that's just, but I'm not opposed to that, and certainly, we can talk about how that might be...
I think that's where technology, right, puts us in a different place, so.
For sure.
I'll give you an example, like I said, of what we do at work.
Okay. And then, okay, so we're good with the document itself, right? And how to read it? Okay. Mallory, can you go back to that, yeah, just to the, over the spreadsheet overview? Perfect. And click on the high school one for me? There's a couple of things that I just want to note to you guys. So the data science class, when you get to that, and the discrete math class are both new classes at the high school this year. Highlight courses that our teachers are getting trained in, they're going to look a little sparse, is my point. There's not, because the teachers don't know what they don't know yet. So in the section of common misconceptions, or any additional materials that you might be losing, using, you're not going to see those built out real well. And I made a note on there that this is a new course, we'll be adding to this coming up as the teachers go through the course. The curriculum's there, or the, you know, the standards are there, and the link is there, but they are not built out as much as some of the rest of them. For AP courses, I linked to, um, there are obviously no O D E standards, so I linked the college board curriculum in those documents. So if you had a desire to go out and see exactly what the AP curriculum is for calculus, you can do that, and the link is right there for anybody to access. And then the final kind of interesting thing is pre-cal, I don't want to say it's a makeup class, but it's a combination class. And it's a class that draws standards from multiple math areas. For example, there's some algebra, um, standards in there. There's some trade standards in there. There's some geometry standards. So for that one, the standards that are linked are the overall, is the overall math standards document, and I noted that at the top also. You have to go to the high school standards and find then the standard that goes to it, because there isn't a pre-cal curriculum, if that makes sense.
Right, and that's why you don't have a heading of pre-cal in here? Or, or is there one?
No, there is. There's a document in there for pre-cal.
Because I'm going from statistics to calc to learning standards mathematics.
So it should... It should say pre-cal. So...
That's the analytic trig.
That's, those are probably modules.
Yeah, that's a module, but in the heading, I don't, I don't see a pre-cal. It goes...
No, it's going to, it's going to say Ohio Learning Standards for Math.
Right, that's what I see.
Yes. So that front page of that should say, subject should say pre-cal.
Right above the chart.
Yeah, right above the chart.
Okay, I see, on the left side, there's the pre-cal. Okay.
Okay, and then it tells you the name of the module, but yeah, that's the one that has the mult, the standards from different strands of math.
Okay.
Okay? So that's it. That's all I got.
I think, I think it's kind of cool that it's a living document, and that across all of our, at least our elementary schools, right? Because they're all different.
They're all pretty good.
That they're all working from the same thing, and they're all looking at the same things. And while one teacher may have different methodology or whatever than another one, it's easy to, it's easier to compare data at that point, because you say, we're all covering the same book, or the same whatever.
Yep. And what is growing out of this is that common assessment idea, where across the board, they will be pacing the same and assessing at the same time, so we'll be able to compare where are we excelling, where are we maybe not doing so well?
Or who's doing something good.
Yes, right? And how can we share that information across, you know, elementary school, because we have four separate buildings? But it happens up here, too, across 12 or 13 sections of a class. You might have a teacher that works down here, and a teacher that works at the John Arville, under the building. And without those common assessments, it's, it becomes difficult to have those conversations. So this is good foundational stuff for what we're working on. So I think it is, it's a, a very positive step for all of us.
This was already in existence.
Not this fancy.
Like, not, not this, I mean, Mike, you did a lot of work to put all this together, this, this, but the documentation is...
Yes, and the teachers work together all the time, and they pace together all the time. That's why I said, I, I mean, I have, I have to clean them up, but all these are done for our subject. I have to go through and clean them all up. That's what I want to know. I'm assuming we want to do English Language Arts next. I don't know when, and I'm not, but I want to start to, this took two full days for me to go through all of these documents, clean them up, you know, make them look similar, because each one was done by a different teacher.
Right, so what you're saying is each of the teachers is responsible for doing it, you have to compile it?
Um, one teacher from each, either grade level or subject.
And then you compile it, and if there's anything you see needs cleaned up?
Yep.
You clean it up?
Yep.
And then present it?
Yes. So that's, I'm, I'm thinking that we're going to want to do English Language Arts next. Probably not, I'm guessing till August. I can even give it to you, probably have it ready, and you can start looking at it in August, is what I'm thinking.
I'm good with that?
Yeah. We appreciate all the...
Thank you.
The teachers did a really nice job. They really have, and it's been, although one teacher put it together, I want to be very clear, one teacher put it on paper, they reviewed it as a T. So all of this has been vetted by, all third grade math teachers knew what was getting put out as, you know, as what we teach and what we teach it. So it's, it was a good exercise for them also. That's it.
Great, and now that this is together, the public will get access to the same digital information, and so that would be nice. Thank you. That's it?
Thank you. That brings us to Treasuries Report and Committee Update. Finance, Audit, and Personnel Committee and Strategic Plan Liaison, Mrs. Grossi.
Sure. I have, um, we had a meeting on June 22nd, and the first thing I wanted to cover was the personnel updates that we had. We are having a job fair. If Mallory wants to tell us about it, and there's our little sign.
I thought we were going to have dancing.
Yeah, there's...
I'm exhausted from all the talking I just did.
If anybody wants a job sign about our, our job fair, please let Mallory know, but if you want to update us on what's going on with that. Sure. So Wednesday, July 12th, make sure we get it right, we're having a job fair. Uh, over in the field house, we had our first one last year, it went pretty well. It's free and open to the public. We are recruiting for classified positions, so non-teaching, regular substitute positions. It could be first, or first shift, second shift, depending on what, what job it's for. Uh, we will have the live bus demos, if anyone wants to drive a bus. We did it last year, it was super fun, a little scary. And we also have the E S C of Northeast Ohio joining us to help recruit for teaching substitutes. So they're going to be our vendor, our kind of go-to direct vendor this year for subs. They'll be onsite as well. Come on out, 10-2. Anyone that is interested in applying or learning more about our positions, you just have to show up. You can complete a short application, um, at the job fair, and you'll have an opportunity to speak with one of our operational departments and have a, kind of quick onsite interview.
That's putting you in the spot, but how many positions we have open right now?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Still working on that. So once the jobs are formalized, we'll get them posted, they'll be up on the website. So check back on the website for, um, jobs coming and what...
So...
Yeah.
So how, how is it now? We're obviously going with the E S C going forward with subs. How were we doing it previously?
Previously, we had a third-party vendor called Rachel, Rachel Wicksey and Associates. So they were, they essentially did the recruiting piece, and all of the payroll, the onboarding, the paperwork, that still went through the E S C. It still funneled directly through them. You know, I, I think we had an okay experience. The E S C's a little closer to home for us, you know, they're, they're willing to come to our community and recruit, whereas Rachel Wicksey was just kind of, you know, they put flyers out for us when they could. The E S C is willing to be here, get the word out in our community, that, you know, that's, that's usually who you have signing up for your positions, are people that live and work close to here.
And so, as you mentioned, jobs and fires and things like that. So during the graduation, there was a big setup and a big teardown, and Mr. Arlesik was master chef in cooking all the dogs and burgers and feeding all staff. So thank you, Mr. Arlesik.
All right, I'm going to continue with our agenda for our finance meeting. We covered most of the items that are on the board agenda, but not all of them in particular, just because the board agenda wasn't complete yet. Um, our board meeting is scheduled a little bit later in the month to facilitate year end in the finance department, which is always complicated. Um, and so we have a lot of routine items on the agenda. As you can see, we go from A through E E E on our agenda, which is a lot of things, but it's, it's year end, it's summer, summer things that are going on, um, and summer camps and whatever, and routine purchase orders. So there's just a lot of stuff on the agenda this evening, just mostly related to year end. We covered our catastrophic cost reimbursement, a conversation on that. Our catastrophic costs are related to special education. We spent $746,000 in the year, fiscal year '22. We'd get that money in fiscal '23, um, and we are scheduled to get 42.2%. That has not changed, correct?
Right, that was...
Back, right? So that was $315,000, so we actually did receive that, um, and we will get the 20, fiscal year '23 money next year, um, at this time. So there's that. Um, we had a conversation about Medicaid cost settlements. We do bill Medicaid for specific services for individuals with I E Ps that need special services. We got, we do, did get the money, but we're getting it in July, so that money is, you know, five-year...
July, but I mean, usually, usually come in June, but we haven't even gotten the final okay, which usually comes a month later, because they only set them, and everything's fully, so it probably will come sometime in the next, this, two years.
So, right, so instead of getting that money in June, and it would have been on our five-year forecast, it's now going to get pushed into July of this, this next school year. Um, we did talk about some issues that we are having with a grant, um, where we were received grant money for a project that we had already done, which was the Waltham Lab, and we talked about, um, that we did not use prevailing wage, because we weren't covered by the grant at the time, and now they want prevailing wage. So there's some, some back and forth going along to the state about that, because that was federal money. Um, so I don't know if you have any updates on that?
Pretty much, they wanted us to submit an improvement plan of how we will ensure we use prevailing wage going forward, and which is kind of silly, because we were awarded the grant after we did the project, and they said they'd reimburse us for the project we already did. So those requirements were not even fitting when the project was done. And they still reimbursed us, and now that, what's your improvement plan? Make sure we don't do it going forward. But we don't typically do construction projects with grant funds in the first place, and so it was kind of a one-time anomaly, which is ironic, because the K-12 safety grant, we have, prevailing wage does not apply to that one, yet that one is still a federal grant, so.
Right, if you do...
It doesn't make any sense, but we're, our improvement plan is basically, uh, my assistant, Mr. Catrissi, he went and wrote the official response, he did not put the part in there where I said, "I'm not listening to the O D E guidance on this, because it led us down the wrong path in the first place," and then said, "Hey, you didn't follow this one requirement." It won't, you didn't know that requirement existed.
Yeah, the, the, one of the things with, if you use federal money to do a construction project, you have to use prevailing wage. It's a, it's a requirement of federal contracting, so, um, that's one of the reasons why we don't use federal funds to do capital improvement projects. Uh, we talked about some anomalies in the gifted funding going forward, and the state budget that might be coming up, um, and how they're taking away from one bucket and putting it in another bucket, but it affects five other buckets, so it's just a complicated thing, but, um, we did talk about our gifted funding. Uh, we had a phone call, or Mr. Flacco had a phone call with Moody's, um...
I'll do it on the air.
Yeah, on the 22nd, to, to see if we could get a better rating. Um, we have an A1 rating currently, we were looking to move to double A. Um, and just in case anybody is not aware, a better credit rating, uh, when you go out to the bond market, will allow you to pay less interest. So that's always important to, to continue to improve your bond rating. So we are in a better position than we were. The last time we went was when we, um...
2016, or 2017?
Two thousand sixteen, when we actually went to Chicago and presented in front of Moody's in order to get a rating for, which we didn't have at that time. So we got a rating when we, um, put out our bonds for our construction project for the elementary schools. And so we're just trying to update that right now. Um, just so that we have that going forward. We had some conversation about the state budget, which it's failing the power. It's not approved yet, as I am aware.
Yeah, we're just waiting to find out. It's in conference room right now, so it's behind closed doors and what's happened behind closed doors, we don't really know.
They technically have till the thirtieth at midnight, right? Um, so we'll see what happens there. And then we talked about our transition to another pay company for our athletic, um, refs. It's the refs and.
Pay for the athletic officials, yeah.
And officials. That was it. That was a lot. That's all I have. Thank you. And that brings us to an update from the treasurer.
All right, a few more updates to add to that. Things have been a very busy month, let's put it that way. Uh, wanted to give a school safety officer update. Um, as we know, for next school year, we're gonna have an officer in every building. Uh, unfortunately, the officer that was covering the high schools past year had resigned, recruited by another school district in Northeast Ohio. So the sheriff's office has been working on recruiting a new person for us, uh, for the front, um, vest to do here. They have a candidate, they had a final interview this afternoon. Uh, looks like it's gonna be a good candidate. And they're coming with, we're gonna have a sub meeting with Dr. Retino and Dr. Payless to meet the, the new potential candidate. Hoping to have that on the July agenda and that replaced by that, so we've, we've set it for next school year. Um, also, uh, this week, one of my payroll staff submitted a resignation, so we posted the opening today. So if you know anybody who knows how to payroll, if they have school payroll experience, which is a real niche, but if you know anybody that posts it on our website. So we're recruiting for that position as well, in addition to all the other positions we're recruiting for. Uh, update on the facility condition assessment that Bielaski is, is, we had a kickoff meeting on June seventh to kind of talk about, just to clarify expectations, what we're looking for. We kind of decided that we're gonna do the assessment at Buckeye first. They're gonna do a whole assessment and a report. Then we're gonna show that to the boards, you know, the administration of the board, to make sure it's what we're looking for before we go into doing Melrich, Loomis, and Candace. Just make sure that they're on the right path and that we're satisfied with the work that's being done. They came out, uh, on June twenty-first in with you Buckeye and did, did all the fieldwork, now we're gonna file a report. And then doing the cost estimate of what approvals they're gonna recommend. They anticipate having that done by late July for us to review. They would do the remaining fieldwork in August before school starts with the goal, hoping to have it done by September thirty, I suppose. The, uh, another update on the vested build project, I was hoping to have a construction contract on the agenda tonight, but that didn't quite happen. And Billy's grounds pop up, there was a little bit of a miscope in the project, so we didn't want to award a contract and get the price, how much that additional work was. Which came out to about fifty-one thousand dollars. We got that pricing late last week. The architect we reviewed, we believe it's reasonable for the school work that is done. So now we just need to finalize with legal counsel, putting the contract together. But Dan's on vacation right now, and that's why I wanted to get it done for this meeting. And so we'll get it done, uh, at a future meeting. Due to the timelines and, and things didn't quite hit our targets, the, the work won't happen till next summer. Obviously, because by the time we award a contract, it's at least eight, twelve weeks from the start of ordering, I imagine, and obviously it's already into the school year. We will, we might try to do some work over winter break, spring break, if it's feasible, we have a way, and those are special, we'll see if we can do anything for next summer. But next summer is when the bulk of the work will occur. Uh, we also talked about there was an alternate, uh, that we did for replacement of all the windows at Buckeye. And around, I don't know, maybe eight thousand. We chose to just kind of hold for now till we figure out the facility assessment, what we're doing. The contract rule, the price for ninety days for us, if we decide we want to pick it up, but that still may not be enough time. We can always still add it later when, you know, a price adjustment we decide then. But at least that option's still on the table. We want to reconsider once we have our facility assessments and kind of figure out our.
And what contractor was that?
It's, uh, Legal Management Systems, Legal Management Group, something like that. They were the, the lowest. In terms of agenda, we'll see if we have approval of grants. Most of the grants are typical grants that we get through, how comprehensive education, federal grants that pass through them. But there's one new grant on the list. It's through the Ohio Attorney General's Office. It's a safety innovation grant, law enforcement, technology, linking. It's a twenty thousand dollar grant that we fight for, or awarded, and it's gonna go towards the, uh, purchase of the cameras that we approved at previous meeting. They're allowing us to go back and do that. There's an official safety training rank that we typically get every year. It's my acquired as well. Because we didn't get an award notice, we just got twenty thousand dollars in the bank account. They, we're, we're starting to file accounts, try to reach out to them and say, hey, is this that grant that we applied for? And so, well, what about the other one? They came back and said, you guys can apply for it. And I'm like, I know I applied for it, I did it the same day, and told them, yeah, I did it. They're like, we have no record of it. Say reopen the application, they'll be applying. Typically, we give about another twenty-one thousand for that one, so I'm hoping that will be awarded here soon. And that also towards the, uh, camera purchase that we already did. Um, as Mrs. Grassi mentioned, we have the, uh, we had a rating call with Moody's. So since our rating was established in two thousand seventeen, we did a, another review of that in two thousand nineteen. They did not give us an upgrade at, at that time. Um, we had another, they do an annual update every year for us. And this year, they asked a lot more questions than they typically do, and we were thinking we were gonna upgrade. We found out today that they are the upgrading us. We are, our rating was an A-one, and then we're going to what's called a double A-three. So triple A is the, it's top rated. Then you have a double A category, which are really high-rated bonds, basically, you know. So we moved up a notch. Three is below of, of that. It, it's a little complicated. You can kind of Google it, you'll see a little chart to explain.
More ages better.
We moved up better. I mean, basically, essentially, in layman's terms, I mean, our credit score got better, so that'll help us for pre-issued debt in the future. You know, getting a lower interest rate, which, you know, rates are higher right now than obviously were back then. But, uh, also in twenty-twenty-four, when our bonds are able to call a pull and refinance those things, and you can get a better rate if the market comes down back. Probably won't happen in twenty-twenty-four, but we have that option in the future. Don't want that time out. So, but that'll help us too. And then possibly in future years, we can give them an upgrade. There's a scorecard you can do to kind of see where you're probably gonna fall. We actually fall one level higher than A-two, but they don't typically bump you two levels at a time, so, you know. And then they always throw the, the pension liability, unfunded pension liabilities, every Republican hitting a lie on us, well, you guys have that. And they also use, um, considering future capital projects and borrowing in the future, they also use that as a reason not to upgrade you. And it's like, well, if you think about buying a house, your credit score is down, it's when you do a pre-approval, you have to start actually doing stuff. They use that as their methodology, but, you know, it's still up there. It's still good news and, you know, in the future, it'll help us. Another update, uh, the baseball and softball fields, we entered into a contract with, then designed to, TGA, to do a assessment of our baseball and softball fields. Formal assessment. We figured since we're doing the facilities, we figured, you know, the, uh, concerns have been ongoing with those fields. We figured we have a, a true, um, assessment of our fields and some cost estimates. What is the cost to fix what we have? We, you know, options of fixing drainage, fixing fencing, dugouts, if we want to do press box, if we want to do turf, if we want to rebuild somewhere else. Kind of just, we know what those costs look like. Um, so we had a meeting on, uh, June twenty-first with, uh, the assistant superintendent, the athletic director, a couple of the baseball and softball coaches. And my assistant, and kind of went through what the concerns are, then they went out and observed the field, and I came back with some recommendations on what that looks like. So we at least have those figures to, to know when we come out.
I met with the A D from Sharer, this is my understanding, they, um, put in, um, artificial turf on their baseball field at the Munson Elementary School where they play, um, the infield. And they were telling me it was somewhere around thirty thousand dollars. I reacted to go down and take a look. I think it's still, um, the infield's, um, dirt, I think it's the batter's boxes and now to, uh, first and third base signs, I believe. But I haven't been out there yet, but I told them I'd like to take a look. It gets a token of the public. If anyone wants to go, that's part of the problem that we have, you know, too, is because kids will ride their bikes, you know, into the field. And run some everything else. But we said, it's working off warm, and for some reason, it pays a little bit better as well, so I don't know if that would help us out at all. And I thought that was really low price considering what we thought would be the turf in the world.
And then, um, like we talked a few months ago, we are continuing the, the online contract, for employment contract model, which is now built. We have training on July thirteenth to how to use that system, so we don't have to sign all the employment contracts. As Mrs. Grassi and I, we're signing hundreds and hundreds of sheets of paper every year. This is hard to have done for many years. But, uh, so hopefully by the July meeting or maybe August meeting, depending how things go, we'll be able to do that all electronically. And instead of us printing two copies and signing, they can all be sent off electronically, people can sign electronically. And not only save us on the time and paper, but saving paper, but also this more efficiency and, and just getting more advanced with that stuff. And improve our efficiencies just in the office and shop and pay. Um, now I had a modular unit update on my list too, so, um, just to kind of, a little bit of background. So there was a unit at Willbe Eastlake, and we were looking, originally looking for one. Willbe Eastlake said we had one that we're longer using. It was a four classroom modular. It had recently been vandalized, but it wasn't anything that was, that couldn't have been fixed. They were offering to us at no charge. Uh, we had a vendor go out to see about moving that modular to our district. And, uh, they determined that it's in too rough a shape to transport over here. They don't think it would survive unless anyone does a modular classroom, like in the freeway somewhere. So we decided not, you know, we decided against that, so we got some quotes and at Billy's grounds, we had gotten a quote for, it was two modulars, four classrooms. It was a similar, similar number of classrooms than we, than we had from Willbe, Willbe Eastlake. Unfortunately, they sold one of the, the, the modulars since that time, so they're still wondering, getting, we really, you know, need one or two classrooms for would have been nice. But, you know, two will do, do it for us. Um, so the price of the, the unit was fifty thousand, it is a used unit. But then the quote was like a hundred and twelve thousand or so, was for putting in the footers, um, fixing up the modular renovations. And, um, basically mostly all in except for to get the front legible to it and just the alarm system, technology. As far as getting, transporting here, getting it all set up, ready to go, connecting to the, if you feel like Buckeye, the wood walkway out there, having it all connected. So we can just run the electrical to it and technology. Um, because we originally, the quote was two hundred, maybe two thousand, what we had at Billy's grounds. That was for the two units with all the installs. And it's A-one sixty-two was for the one with, with all the installs. That had to change when we met, met Billy's grounds.
Just to, to clarify, so right now, there are four units kind of in a shotgun configuration at Buckeye. And so these will be shotgun configuration on the other side of the sidewalk, basically. So it's, we may have to adjust a little bit with the playground, which, but, but there's no, nothing that we can't handle. And the, you know, we can't compensate elsewhere for the playground.
Do we know if those are gonna be ready for the beginning of school, or is it gonna be, it might not quite be ready, but it would be ready soon after?
Their estimation is one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty days all in.
Novemberish, December, probably. Do you, I, keep in mind, maybe earlier than second semester, we both.
Yeah, okay.
And then the improvements and all that stuff, just a simple, we both can't re-plan it over.
They're not as easy to find as people might think they are, so.
So besides all that stuff, then doing fiscal year-end, um, as you know, it's coming on the agenda and, uh, that's what I'm doing.
Thank you. Just as a side to, um, just our grant acceptance, you know, our grant acceptance is over one, I did quick math, I didn't do it exact. It looks like one point seven one dollars. So it is, it's significant dollars that we use for a variety of different functions within the school. Most of them being special added title, so.
Um, that brings us to public participation. So anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited, limited to three minutes. Is there any public participation tonight?
Yes.
Beverly Shor, township. Um, what I want to talk about is the intervention specialist. Um, I'm looking at your agenda, and I know you've been talking about this a little bit. So I'm curious, I'd like to know where I could find a full description, uh, job description of the intervention specialist that will be working within the Riverside District. Uh, it appears that there's going to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent on the next school year for this job. So I'd like to find out exactly what that entails. What, what type of an intervention is it with the students, or is it counseling? What, what all is involved with that? So if I could, um, have somebody let me know how I can get that information, that would be great. And other than that, I'd just like to make an opinion, uh, my opinion, state my opinion. Um, when it comes to the social, emotional learning, um, controversy that's going on, one of the things I think about is how in my family and throughout a lot of my parents and their children, when it comes to having good emotional balance and social interaction with their community and so forth, I really find that when they have a really top-notch education, it gives them confidence that they need to move forward and beyond some of the issues that the school district thinks that they need to handle for the parents. So that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
Yes.
John Music, Painswell Township. Uh, yeah, I just want to give my opinions also.
I'm sorry, one, one minute, sorry. I'm sorry, we're moving.
You've been cutting hair, sir.
No. We're just third time today.
It's not reset it. Technical error.
Yeah, so let me, I'm, I'm happy, I will give you, how about, how about this? I will give you a thirty-second warning.
Well, I can wait for that.
I don't think it's, I don't think.
It might not be doable.
There you go.
Are you ready? Okay, like I said, John Music, Painswell Township. I went to Riverside, I'll talk for this district. And in my opinion, and I agree about the S E L, it should not be taught in school. That is something that should come through our education and through our parents. And like I have said before, you have students, parents, and taxpayers. In my opinion, all Riverside, and I include them in all schools, have failed each one. Our taxpayers are not getting their money's worth. The parents are hearing things that their kids are being taught that they don't agree with. They're their parent. Each child only has one set of parents. And as far as our students go, they aren't getting the education they need to succeed in life. That should be Riverside's number one priority, is to educate the kids three hours, not any of this other stuff. And I am very unhappy about Riverside. I am totally embarrassed, really, what I hear. And I've talked to students at Riverside, so I do know. This one girl says, well, I'm not good at math, and we didn't spend a lot of time on math. She couldn't even add a dollar ninety and twenty cents and didn't know what the answer was. And, and her head. And the thing about it is, it's like, we aren't failing our children. Riverside needs to put number one priority for twenty-three, twenty-four, it'd be to educate. No more S E L. And as far as the taxpayers go, taxpayers should not be rewarding poor behavior. I know I won't. And when you're in the private sector, you get a performance report, uh, valuation every year. You're either, it's good or it's bad. And the same thing with our schools. Our schools are failing. And like I've said here before, I've talked to the O S B A many times, and that, before the N S B A went away, till they stopped that contract, I think it was ten twenty-five of twenty-one. And they sent a letter to the U S Department of, I called U S Department of Education too. So anyhow, and I called. So anyhow, and I called COSPA, who has replaced the, anyhow, beside the point. We need to do a better job of educating our children, and Riverside has got to get their act together. You know, I don't think, in my opinion, it's the number one priority here. You're failing the students, the parents, and the taxpayers. And me personally, I do not reward poor results. Thank you.
Any other public participation? All right, thank you. That brings us to our consent agendas. First up is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through E. Do I have a second?
Second.
Before we have any discussion on those, I would like to thank the individuals who have donations, given donations. So we received $1,000 from Jared Linder to Riverside Theater, $375 from Riverside Theater alumni to Riverside Theater, and $100 from Sally V. Dean Blower to Riverside Drive. So thank you to those groups and individuals. Is there any discussion on any of these other agenda items?
So I just had a question on the permanent appropriations. I don't know if this is helpful, what it, so what it, just to describe it, it's a list of the fund names, the permanent appropriations, the amounts as appropriated, adjustments, and then revised amount and explanation. I'm just hoping to just get a better understanding of.
Okay.
I'm just curious as to get a little more information on the appropriations.
So the appropriations is a budget that the board approves on a regular basis. You know, we require to pass it by October 1st of each year. We do make some adjustments as the year goes on, and at the end of the year, every junior will see, every school district always makes adjustments to that. We appropriate at a fund level, so basically the board's approving a budget for, for fund of just that, you know, there's much more detail that goes into that budget, but the board approves at a fund level. So some of the adjustments you see, this is a couple examples, so in Fund 499, there's an increase of 20,000, that's because of the Attorney General grant, we received that grant, meaning to increase the appropriation, because we had to adjust the purchase order for cameras to add those things to the accounting for. The funds that start with 500, you know, all the 500 funds are all federal grants, so we're given like an allocation each year on most of these grants. And so they're on a reimbursement basis, so you get a grant, you appropriate, so as I say, a million dollar grant, you appropriate a million dollars. You're allowed to spend that throughout the year, you carry over, I think about the 15% you don't spend. These are annual grants, so it's, you know, it's always a little bit hard. So what happens is, in the fiscal year, we have to reduce the appropriation down to what we actually spent, and the estimated revenue now, there's a revenue part to this piece, and you can't appropriate more than your cash balance, which is revenue. So we have to lower the budget now to basically comply with the higher-wise code. Doesn't really change anything, just a budget cleanup type of exercise. So that's basically what's happening in those 500 funds. The other couple of funds, 018, 200, and 300, those are activity funds, student activity funds, and district activity funds. So that includes things like the Veterans Memorial, athletic funds, student council, the Beaver Nation School Store, and so there's a bunch of sub-accounts for those funds. We had to increase some of those because, for example, the Beaver Nation School Store, which went took off this year, they collected $56,000 in revenue, they had about $50,000 in expenses, so it was much more activity we originated the budget for. So we had to increase our anticipated revenue, increase our budget, just to make sure that we didn't overspend that amount. Those ones are pretty much subsysning funds. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, and it was, most of the, most of the big differences were in the 500 series of funds, and I just, again, I just, you know, it says adjusted appropriation based on spending, I just wanted a better understanding, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, those, those federal funds will then give you adjustments during the year as well, and they'll give you additional dollars if other schools didn't spend their carryover, et cetera, et cetera, and every time they do that, and we will get allocated more money, and then in order to spend that money, we have to appropriate it. We're not allowed to spend what we don't appropriate, so that's the whole reason behind having the appropriations on our budget all the time. And then we also have to appropriate what, at least a quarter of the next year's, so that we can actually spend in July and August. We have to have some temporary appropriations on the budget before we adapt our real budget later on in September.
Gotcha. Now, these adjustments affect the five-year forecast?
Correct, because the only funds in the five-year forecast is 001 and 030, which is the joint financing district, and those didn't change. The appropriations are all extending limits, so you can't exceed it, geologize it.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on any of these other A through E? All right, if there are none, can we call the role, Mr. Placko?
Linda Grassi.
Hi.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
I, I would just like to thank the treasurer's office and the finance department, because year end is typically really awful. Like, it's a really awful time of year, and then you'll have to go through the audit, so it's a lot of work in order to get all this information in line with where we have to be and keep us in compliance, so.
Motion carried.
Sure.
That's okay. That brings us to personnel. Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A, J. For any discussion on these items? I don't hear any none, can we call the role?
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda for curriculum and programming.
Make a motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, item A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hear any none, can you call the role?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. Bring this to consent agenda for buildings and grounds and operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds, consent agenda, items A to E, as recommended by the superintendent, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, I'm not, Mr. Placko.
Two of you fishel now.
Yeah. Any discussion?
The bleacher basketball inspections, is that all of them like district-wide, or what is, is it, what is that?
Yeah.
Entire district?
Any other discussion? Many of which we kind of already talked about. We do also, as part of this, we do have a revised set of policies, which I'm not exactly sure winds up on Buildings Grounds, but, so this is the first reading of them. And the way policies work.
We can vote on, on A through E, and then we'll talk about the first reading list right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of my schedule. So, so I will stop. No other discussion? Have you already called the role?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, now, it's appropriate to talk about the policies. So, so the way it works is that as policy revisions are made, there's a first reading, and then at the next regular meeting, there will be an approval. So we do have quite a slate of revisions, which people can review if they, if they would like, and then we will vote on them at the July meeting.
Thank you.
And just so anyone knows, they can find those online.
They can find the current policy as long as they're not a new policy. They need a revision for the board to approve.
Just the board.
Then they will, once in July, I'll work with the Ola, and those will be updated in a couple weeks. So the new ones will be done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to a Board of Education update. One thing I just want to bring up, it's that time of year for evaluations and setting objectives. So I don't know, we can get a schedule, what you think we want, what timeline you want to be?
I'm going to do it.
You just need by like July 31st, or give them by July 31st?
I've been a little busy, so.
The other thing is, we do have the board evaluation also. So I will send that out, that we will have to make a date to discuss during a public session. So remember, we approved that board evaluation that we completed at the same time that we do complete the superintendent and the treasurer's all evaluation objectives.
So can I ask a question? We still have to do.
We have to do an exit.
Do we do, like, what do we do?
I can, I, maybe ask Dan.
Okay. Not that I don't want to do any.
I think we should show them.
I don't know. I've never, I've never done this, so like, right. All right, so we'll get some dates out. I will get the board evaluation sheet out for us to take a look at, and then we'll talk about dates.
And I'll send out, I'll send out the blank copies, and I'll send out copies of last year's emails, the finals. I'll make sure I do that, I just, it just totally slipped. I mean, I thought about it, and then I forgot.
Any other Board of Education updates?
Happy last month of work, Mr. Phillips.
Count it down.
Just remind you, next slide is the revised one.
Thank you. So you don't read it in conference? All right, so that brings us to executive session. So be it resolved that Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby adjourns to executive session at 8:21 PM to discuss a personnel matter relating to the employment of a public official and compensation. And Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby designate all matters discussed in this executive session as strictly confidential, and finds that this designation is warranted because of the status of this matter and the need to preserve confidentiality to property, to properly conduct the business of this Board of Education. Is that good? Thank you. And any discussion? And can we call the role, please?
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.